Well, I call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug?
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
Present.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Next item is a presentation, 2016 election. That would be you.
Mayor and council, I am here tonight to talk a little bit about the upcoming 2016 election. I know you have heard some of this information before, but I think it's important that we inform our residents and our voters out there about some of the election stuff that they really need to know, since this is a different, basically a historic-type election for the town of Prescott Valley. We've never had an election in the fall, and in an odd, even numbered year. We've always had them in the odd spring years. But due to the consolidated election laws now, we have to have our election at the same time that the federal, state, counties, districts, and other municipalities have theirs too. So that's why I'm here tonight, to give you a little bit of info about that, and we'll go ahead and proceed. First of all, you need to know when the elections are this fall. They're in the primaries in August on the 30th, and we will have a runoff election in November on the 8th, only if it's necessary. We have four council seats that will be open this election, and if we fill them all at the primary election, then we won't really need to have that November election. So we'll have to play that one by ear and see how it goes. Due to these election laws, one of the things that our voters really need to be aware of, since they are all used to receiving a ballot in the mail, that's not going to happen for everybody this year. If folks aren't registered to receive an early ballot, and they're not on the early voting list to receive a mail ballot, then they're going to have to go to one of the three polling places in town and stand in line and wait to vote. So at this point in the town of Prescott Valley, we have about 22,000 to 23,000 now, it's gone up over the past few weeks, registered voters, and of those registered voters, 70% of them are now on the permanent early voting list, and those are the folks that are going to receive their ballot in the mail. Now, the ones that are not on that early voting list are the ones I really want to address tonight, because being as they're going to have to go to the voting center to vote, they're not going to get that ballot in the mail like they're used to, maybe there's some other things that they can do, and I'd like to tell them what that is. Number one, if a person is already registered as a voter with Yavapai County voter registration, and they're not on the permanent early voting list already, they can sign a form choosing to be so. Folks that are not registered to vote can also fill out a simple registration form, and there's a little box on it now for permanent early voting list. So if you're new to voting and you want to register to vote, the simplest way for you to do that would be to check that little box so that when the early ballots come out, you'll get one too. So, some of the benefits of getting a ballot in the mail. For residents that have voted for years in Prescott Valley, you know you've always gotten your ballot in the mail, and therefore you could take your ballot home, and you could sit down at the kitchen table, and you could think about the choices that you want to make. And being as this is a consolidated election, like I said, with all the different levels of government, that's a big benefit to be able to take that ballot home and make those decisions after you give it some careful thought. It's definitely a benefit. Also, on elections, not just this particular one, but including this particular one, you would also get a notice in the mail if you were on that list. You'd get a notice 90 days, three months in advance, that an election's coming up. And on that, that card that they send you, they'll also tell you the dates of the election, and they'll also tell you when to expect your early ballot. People that have been receiving those ballots in the mail all along are aware of that. Those of you who have not been getting your ballots in the mail, or are not going to get their ballots in the mail unless they get on that early voting list, will find that a huge benefit. So that's why I'm here tonight. I want to tell all of our citizens in Prescott Valley that we've moved to this new fall election cycle. I've gotten numerous phone calls already from some of our electorate out there, wondering where their ballot is for the March and the May elections, and I'm like, okay, you need to know, we're no longer doing that. We've moved to the fall of this year. And so I'm trying to make them all aware of that, as well as the availability of that permanent early voting list, so that they too can get that in the mail and continue voting as they always have in Prescott Valley. Some of the dates that our voters also need to be aware of is that voter registration does close August the 1st, and that's the usual 29 days before any election, and then a couple days later, early voting starts. So they have until almost, until early voting starts to get registered, but definitely by August 1st. If they want to get registered for that permanent early voting list, they've got to get that done by June 1st. That gives the Yavapai County voter registration time to process all those. So we'll hope that they can get in there. I have all the forms available in my office. They can also get them off the Yavapai County website, and they've got the list, P-E-V-L, permanent early voting list, right there on their election page. As I said, we also have a home rule, or alternative expenditure election this fall. So folks who are interested in submitting either pro or con arguments for the home rule option can also submit them to me, but they must be submitted by June 1st. And I often get the question, well, why do you charge for that? Why do you charge for that? Well, we have that in our town code to allow for a little bit of help in producing the publicity pamphlet. Trust me, it is diminuous amount compared to what we pay for that publicity pamphlet. But I would encourage folks, if they're interested in weighing in on the home rule option, that they submit those arguments to me by June 1st. So let's inform everybody that we know about the change in the election cycle to the fall. Let's make sure they're aware of that permanent early voting list, so that they too can get their ballot in the mail, make sure that they have the opportunity to do that. But indeed, everybody's helped to help spread that word, and let's get it out there for everybody. Like I said, the benefits are definitely worth it. Go for it. We did the dates. I guess I need to know if you have any questions.
Questions, anyone? Marty?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. Four years ago, I was a poll worker before I was on the council, and for the last presidential election, a lot of people were online at the polling center with the early voting ballot. And they had those ballots I was able to collect, and I had to put them in a separate box. So I would encourage everybody that if you do get an early ballot, to mail it prior to the voting date, so that your vote gets counted, and you guarantee that it gets counted.
Absolutely, and as an alternative to that, too, Prescott Valley has a ballot box right outside our front doors over here, that people are certainly encouraged to drop their ballots in as they complete them, and I would highly recommend that.
There you go, Tomins. Steve?
I was just wondering, well, I know, but for people that don't know, if they wanted to pick up a packet to run for council, they would come to your office, right?
Yes.
And how many signatures are they going to need this year? Do you know that already?
Okay, folks, folks who are interested in running for a position for one of the open seats on council can come to my office at, that's the town clerk's office at 7501 East Civic Circle, the second floor, and I'll have a packet available on April 4th for those who are interested. I prefer to have people schedule an appointment with me, so that I can sit down and explain sheet by sheet what's in that council packet and what is entailed with that, so that they're just not blindly out there floundering. So I like to give them a little hand up to get them started. So I've already got a couple of people who have made appointments with me, and I would certainly encourage anybody else, if they're interested in running, to also give me a call. My phone number is 759-3028.
Other questions?
Well, I have one question for everybody out there, and that is, are you going to be able to say, after this election, I cared enough to vote? Thank you.
So there are going to be, how many signatures did you see you're going to need?
Candidates would need 244 signatures minimum.
Wow, I had to get 500 last time.
The other questions, comments? Diane, good job.
I was just going to ask, you mentioned the word diminuous. What's that mean?
Very, very teeny. That big.
Very, very.
Teeny, tiny.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next item, discussion. Welcome to Prescott Valley sign. Norm?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got quite a few slides for this next item, but basically what's going on is, it's been a long-term goal, I think, of the business community of Prescott Valley to have a sense of place with a monument sign of welcome to Prescott Valley. In fact, since I've been here over the years, it's always been a core wish, so to speak. Typically, a business community would like that on the significant transportation quarter, that would be Highway 69 into Prescott Valley. So I think the slide I have up in front of you is, I think council may be aware here a couple of years ago, actually, it's been two years ago in January of '14, that we were able, some of the photo enforcement signs, when photo enforcement, we were able to establish the value of those breakable signs in ADOT right-of-way. Got a little more stricter standard for breakaway and like for high-speed roadways, but we were able to purchase signs and put them over the top of those photo enforcement signs for the welcome to Prescott Valley sign. So I think council is well aware, this is the one down by Highway 169, as you come from Phoenix, and the other one's over by Victorian Estates on Highway 69. So it's always been a long-term goal. We were able to work with ADOT, and we do thank our local district office that we came up with the logo, and just a little message there, please drive safely. So we got our welcome to Prescott Valley sign and posted it basically at both entry points into Prescott Valley on State Route 69. What staff would really like to go with and get council's comments is, I think you're well aware that our monument sign is going to be part of the recent Lake Shore Drive widening. This is in conjunction with the art piece, but this was put into the contract, and what this is, we call this a shop drawing, but this is what you're going to see out there, and it's actually about three-quarters constructed, so you can really see the mass and how that sense of, you know, shape's going to be out in front of our government center here. So you're looking at the sign that's going to be complete, I think, in about two weeks. In fact, I think just in the last couple of days, they're building the paver patio out in front, so it's really starting to take shape. What we'd like to do with staff is, just a little background on this, the reason we chose this particular modification was, I know Ryan Judy went back and looked at some of the archives, the particular sign package that was approved for Section 14 back in 2001 is really what this is modeled after, and in conformance, that's what, back in 2001, the council said, yes, we need some standard specifications. So the shape and, you know, size and like, that's really what is going to look out there. And you can see, it's about, you know, 25-foot wide sign, about eight feet tall. And likewise, this is one in Section 14, too, an existing sign in front of the entertainment district, so this is that particular sign design standard that we have for Section 14, for a monument sign. Gives it the sense of place, and of course identifies particularly what that particular building is, in this case, the entertainment district. So that's really what we'd like to talk about, staff. We know what the sign costs out front here. We've got a welcome to Prescott Valley signs on Highway 69. Those are a little more to engineer code, so to speak, with breakaway bases and like, maybe a little more basic, and of course, you can get the more ornate signs that we're going to have out in front and is in Section 14. So that's the choices we have. Staff would like to, with your direction, if you'd like us to pursue different types of signs or send it to the committee, that's what I'd like to get comment tonight. Just wanted to give you a little idea, too, of some of the other monument signs that's available in the area. Of course, this speaks for itself, this one up here four or five years ago, it turns to the Chino Valley, that road for South Roundabout, and we looked online, and actually, here is a particular sign that's available in Payson. I know, I asked Marnie to come tonight and actually give her comments about, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, hear firsthand from the comments there. I do know, you know, the Chamber of Commerce has their signs up in Highway 69, you know, they're very popular for the, some of the service clubs. We've got one on Highway 69 down by Enterprise Parkway, and I think there's one actually over by Starlight Drive on Highway 69. So once again, the business community is very much behind these particular signs. So I'd like to have Marnie come up, Mayor, if you would, and she can talk about some of the Chamber of Commerce's comments.
Welcome, Marnie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, when Norm asked me to come and speak, it's been, I remember 10 years ago when I came through here and I went to a conference, and Laura Lee might remember, Dan Schilling with the Arts and Humanities Council with Arizona, and they had a conference in Prescott, and I was new to the community, but had a lot of background in historical tourism from being in the White Mountains. And I remember sitting in that audience, and I tell this story all the time, because I was new here, but immediately passionate about supporting and promoting and working on behalf of our community, and they talked about how Prescott has this sense of place, it has this destination, and how, what was that community we drove through as we got here? Looked like one long strip mall. Well, you know, I'll be the first to say that that one long strip mall is home to many of our businesses that support our local economy, and they deserve recognition and the importance of being a part of Prescott Valley as anybody else does, and the fact that they are in Prescott Valley. All too often, we forget, people coming through, forget where they are, new travelers, I can't tell you how many times, at the Chamber of Commerce office, they come in and say, well, we're in Prescott yet. Well, first they probably closed their eyes as they were passing the first one, that's, you know, better than the slow down, we're going to photo radar you signs that we had two years prior to that, which was the Chamber of Commerce nightmare. But these are, you know, welcome to Prescott Valley, please drive safely, a great message, we like it, but it's not necessarily as impactful as maybe a gateway or welcome sign would be. I went online also myself and started looking at various locations throughout the country. I grabbed these from a lot of places. A lot of them are rural communities. There's one from Weston, Missouri, I happen to be visiting. Beautiful country, you don't know where one begins and the other community begins, because it's long, rolling fields of farmland. So the only way you can identify as you're going through some of these is when they have a monument sign, and Weston, Missouri is also on there. Here's one from Wickenburg. So again, it creates a sense of place. We've had a community of over 41,000 people. We're here because we want to be. We see people every day in the chamber office that have moved here for a variety of reasons. One, they love it here. Why not recognize the fact that we can establish our own sense of place, our own identity, and make an impact when people are coming through? We're just not on the way to Prescott, we are actually a destination, and we're Prescott Valley. Monuments and welcome signs deliver that. They give you a beginning. On either end, you design something that is complementary to your community, which we already have designs and signs and monuments in our community that would work to that and speak to that. Our business is here because they want to be, and I think we need to recognize that we're proud of that community and make it the sense of place that they're proud to be a part of. So we love the idea, and as I said, there's some great different ideas up there, large communities, small communities, but you make it what it is. Prescott Valley is very unique to itself, but we're here, we're going to stay, and we're going to grow, so let's keep up with the times. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Marty, that's an excellent presentation.
I like all this.
Thank you.
Well, Marnie, you may not know this, but what are the restrictions that ADOT will put on us, because it's always been a problem for us?
I'm sure, well, I'm one that believes there's nothing that can't be overcome.
And I agree with that.
You know, there's a way, there's, if you look at any one of those signs, somebody had to have some approval to erect it. And case in point, Highway 89 between Prescott and I-40, a major thoroughfare of travelers, and you've got horses welcoming you to Chino Valley. Let me tell you, somebody did something that got it to happen, so I believe that it can be done.
And my hope is that that broke the ice for us, because we've wanted for years to accomplish this, and now is the time for us to be strong about it and make it happen. So my other question is, costs and budget that we have to work with.
I'm sure that's something that'll be, have to be looked at, you know? They are not, obviously, based on past experience, those are not inexpensive, but what can we do to help make that happen?
Exactly.
And Laura Lee, you bring up a good point. We have been after monument signs into Prescott Valley for 20 years, and hats off to Norm and to our district engineer, that we have, or that Norm has beaten on them enough, pointing out other communities that have entry monument signs into their communities, why can't we? And so finally, Norm has prevailed, and he now has that approval. And the first kind of baby step was converting the photo enforcement signs to a welcome sign, but now he has the green light to go forward, and Norm, if you want to talk about that, you certainly can.
Yeah, Councilwoman, I'd like to address your comment first. They do have criteria, it's a high-speed road, but typically what that is, there's usually, ADOT has on a highway like Highway 69, a 30-foot clear zone. In addition to, you can always put up guardrail, too, so you're just looking at a little more additional cost. But the Chino Valley signs are a prime example, that sign is outside the clear zone, and it's very doable. I did point out, if, I think you saw the sign that we have up there now, it does have breakaway, the welcome to Prescott Valley.
Ugly.
Right, they are ugly, but to the point, you can see some of these signs, as long as you get it out of the clear area, we can work with different methodologies in order to get one that's very acceptable. The Payson sign I showed you is a very good example, it's in an urban area, and it's really not much different than you'd see in a sidewalk, curb, and gutter area, so very, very doable. And to your point, I think you can actually build a particular sign that Marnie was pointing out, has your character of your community, and what that's going to be, there's lots of opportunity there. To answer your question about cost, this particular monument sign out here in low bid is about $50,000, the one that I showed there. So that gives you order of magnitude for a substantial monument sign that's got, as you say, a little artistic and architectural appeal to it.
I got a question.
Marty?
Yeah, actually, two questions. First of all, will this be a public-private endeavor to try to raise money to pay for this, or is it going to come out of the town budget? And what kind of timeline are we looking at?
I guess, Councilman, I, to answer your question, it can be that, if need be. We can easily tell you orders of magnitude for what sign you may be looking for. Could it be a partnership? Very well could be. Could it come out of the budget? Yes. That's what we're seeking comment from you tonight. And once again, how do you seek that comment about what this sign is going to be also?
I'd just like to comment, Norm, from an economic development standpoint. I've had business owners comment to me, you don't seem to be very proud of your community. And when I ask them what they mean, they're talking about this, and they don't want to come to communities that don't put the pride out there. They want to be, businesses want to be in a community that's proud, and that they are willing to identify what that community is about on their entrance.
Other questions, comments?
I have one.
Steve?
I just wanted to make a comment and say, if we're going to do it, y'all are saying that the businesses want it, we should have them fund it. That's the way I see it, at least.
Other questions, comments?
I just got one more.
Oh, Marty?
Yeah, I mean, we already have the format for, you know, what the sign should look like. Is there a setback that we don't have to go through ADOT, that we could put a, you know, a highly visible sign, you know, setback a That we could put a, you know, a highly visible sign, you know, setback a certain distance so that it doesn't, we don't have to go through ADOT and ask their permission? And also, I don't consider 45 miles an hour a high speed.
To tell me, Councilman Grossman, ADOT's our partner. We got, I have a good relationship with the district engineer about what's reasonable. So we partner well with them. I think it's going to be a win-win. We can actually, as you see some of these examples, you can get a very attractive sign that, yes, we had to weigh in about safe sight, which is what you want to do. You don't want that liability, but you can do a very attractive sign like this and place it to where, yes, everyone would agree, yeah, that's got good visibility and what we're thinking about and still meet the criteria. So I don't think you're too restricted that we want to not work with ADOT. If it's the council's desire that it would be Highway 69 right-of-way, then yeah, that's where it has to go, where you got to put it on private property. And with those big right-of-ways, then you wouldn't be able to see the signs. So if it's going to go on ADOT's right-of-way, there's a good win-win for us that we can do that. No different in these communities. There's a good example of Payson. You can see the curb and gutter acts as the barrier. And once again, I don't know the particular design speed on this, but there's some parameters that you, that we can work with ADOT on and get, get their approval, actually.
Yeah, I had, I had no doubt that we had a good working relationship with ADOT, but sometimes it's just, you can get it done faster without having to ask permission of another organization.
Well, don't, don't we have to work with them on that or is there a road?
If it's going to go right-of-way, yes. And we can expedite it. You know, as I say, we've got a very good relationship. We know kind of where to go and how to get there quickly. So Prescott Valley is very good at that.
Good. Vice Mayor?
You know, I'm all for economic development. I have been as long as I can remember. But I am concerned about the cost. It's, it's going to be a high cost and I think we really need to take a close look at that. I don't know that that's something we need today. It's something certainly the town needs. It's something that we need to show pride in the town. Maybe it's something we work towards. I don't know. I think we need to look at it, though, because I don't think we can write a check for that today. I really don't. I can't, I can't support that today.
Mike?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm ready to see some proposals to get an idea of what, what it might look like, what the cost might be. I don't even know. We've talked about numbers. Obviously, we have two up right now, maybe three or more. So I think once we have the concept, an idea of what it might look like, then we could make a decision how to pursue that.
Larry?
Yeah, I think you've got two issues before you. Number one, design, what, what does it look like? And then number two, paying for it. And so just a question, are you comfortable with the design for the entertainment center? That, that essentially that monument sign that's been used all over Section 14 that Norm showed initially, is, are you, is that the direction you'd like to go? Or did you have something else in mind?
Larry, your comment?
I, I like all of the signs and I do like the idea of getting a sign, but I am concerned in regards to the cost.
Okay.
And that really would, I need to always start with, with the cost. That helps me.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I think the signs should be consistent. And I, I think at this point, they are, and I think they should stay that way. That's the direction we should head in. I just think we need to look at how we're going to pay for it.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, again, I think until I see something concrete, I'm not in a position to really give you any more feedback. I think what we're looking at, at the entrance of the, the town center, civic center here is relatively large and I don't know if we want to go that big or something smaller. So I'd like to see some options before we make a decision and that obviously will drive the cost. And so I think the smaller versus larger would probably impact cost for sure.
Just to, to point out, if you take a look at the entry monument into Stone Ridge, those are large and in fact, probably larger, wouldn't you say, Norm? Larger than that particular sign there. Okay, I mean, just to put things in perspective.
Laura?
Well, I do want us to stay consistent and you see the top part there where the Prescott Valley Town Center verbiage is, that could be a little more artistic and unique to invite people in and keep us consistent with what we already have and not even really add to the costs. I, too, am concerned about the costs and I think that we should explore all options before we go forward.
Steve?
Okay. Fair enough. I like the style and what I was meaning by the, the businesses paying for, we could sell advertising on it. Like, if you saw some of the other pictures that were in there, they had groups that I'm assuming sponsored their, their signs that probably helped pay for it. And that's something we could look into, maybe.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, if I'm hearing things right, it would be, the sign is, is pretty consistent. I mean, more or less that style, not exactly that, but more or less that style. And then the second thing is, is cost. And I'm very sure that Norm was not talking about having all four signs because you'd be looking at two on 69 and then two on 89A and then that would cover all the traffic coming in through town. That that's something that could be phased over a number of years, meaning like one a year. And then going ahead and exploring partnerships is what I'm hearing. Is that appropriate? With that in mind, that will be Norm's marching orders to go ahead and look at developing partners for that and to not swallow the nugget all at once. Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Got council comments on that, Norm?
Very good. I can work with that.
You can work with that?
I can work with that.
Marnie, thanks for your comment. Okay, great. Well, let's move on to the next one. Discussion, Cleanup Day. Norm, you're back up.
Yes, Mayor, let me get my... Here's our Cleanup Day flyer. Mayor, Council, this one probably looks familiar to you. This is our annual Cleanup Day. It's always conducted the first weekend in May, which is going to be May 7th this year. A very popular event to have people clean up their treasures or just have that opportunity in the spring to clean up their particular yards and, you know, beautify our town. Always like to point out, too, this event's a very popular, too, that we partner with the Chamber of Commerce. I was talking with Marnie before the meeting here and she's already, I think she gets a couple hundred people signed up and they have T-shirts and serve hot dogs at the end. I think they start around, early in the morning, around eight and get done around noon, but they have an absolute huge turnout. And in fact, I think at times even direct them just to go directly to a place. So actually, there's service groups, scout groups, church groups, they go to different points of the town and do a heck of a job. And we get a couple hundred people cleaning up a lot of the public spaces here in Prescott Valley. So we always partner with the Chamber of Commerce, you can see them noted, and, you know, put up here on this particular flyer. Did want to point out to Council, this flyer does go out in the utility bills as a black and white with all the information you see to advise the public, not only of Cleanup Day to go dump their trash, but also our partnership with Team Up to Cleanup. And this goes out in utility bills, starting, I think, late this month and in April. So everyone will have it just prior to the event. So it'll go out to all of our particular utility billing customers.
I did want to share that this year is Team Up to Cleanup 20, so celebrating the 20th anniversary of when this program starred, the partnership between the town and the Prescott Valley, bringing people together to help. So we're really excited about this being the 20th year and something that's recognized throughout the state as an ongoing, sustainable cleanup program that's supported by many, many organizations, not only the town and the Chamber, but a lot of our business sponsors that make it possible.
And Marnie or Norm, is there any ability for somebody that is handicapped and unable to take their garbage to the dump? Is there any, any chance that they could get some assistance?
You know, fortunately, we have a wonderful service organization in our community called the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club. Roar! And they do take care of seniors and those unable to, to get their stuff to the dump, but they do need to call the Public Works Department. The phone number is on there in order to make the arrangements. And then we get a schedule and then our Lions Club members get together with the trucks and do the pickup for them. In addition, we also have, our club has an adopter road. They're cleaning that road that same day, making that part of it. And it would be really nice if we got a lot of the service clubs, rather than pick here and there, everybody kind of did it in one big day would be a way to get our spring cleaning done all at one time in the community. And if you've driven up Glassford Hill up towards 89A, we can't get it done too soon because that field over there on the right-hand side is just a mess. So we're excited about, but it's number 20. We have T-shirts and a lot of partners on it and we're, it's one of our fun days. So, sorry, Norm, but it's 20 years. I was really excited about that.
If Marnie's complete, I'll continue here. I think we're on partners, wanted to go, Yount Pike County, we, we'll continue our partnership with them. They've, have indicated they'd like to participate and send a letter and also Dewey-Humboldt. So as Councils are aware, they pay their proportionate share for their residents that come in and we accommodate that. So that's our partners. And did want to go over, I think Marnie touched upon a little bit, was always like to call attention this time of year to, to our current Adopt a Street participants. These are the service club and also a faith-based type of organizations or just groups that do adopt a certain section of a town right-of-way and help clean up those. So I do like to point out, we got about a dozen people there and always like to call attention to them because they do clean up even more than one time a year. And Mayor, you're probably aware, we do, you do send out a letter to each one of those particular participants to encourage them to, and thank them for their participation as an Adopt a Street member, but also maybe get together on that day when we've just got a blitz of people all over cleaning up the town on May 7th and getting rid of it down at the Cleanup Day. So that's the particular there. It's always fun just to show, there's a picture last year, of course, of what it looks like if you haven't had the opportunity. So yes, we get a mountain of trash and what the item actually is, get into the item that you have before you, is the actual hauling contract. Public Works staff does work the event, keeps people safe in dumping the articles, but at the end of the day, a private contractor does call in, come in and smash the trash and actually load it into these containers and haul it to a landfill for disposal. So that's typically done at the end of the day. What you do have before you is we sent that out for bid and if you look at your council action, we only received one bid. But I do have great confidence with the bid because we benchmarked against last year and it's right in line, it's actually a quarter per ton less than what we had last year. So concern may be, we typically get a couple bidders. We do send it out to all the local solid waste haulers, but we only get typically two bidders. But whether we had a second bid, it's right in line with what is last year. So even though it's only one bid, it's very competitive what we expected to see. So Prescott Valley, C and D landfill, a very good vendor. In fact, they come in right at 5:00 once we close the gates and they typically have it done by Sunday morning. They work all night, so there's not any litter problem. They are a very proficient contractor. In addition to waste management, they've gotten a bid the last couple of years. So it's quite a operation that over time has really well received by the public. In addition to our vendors that help haul it away are very in tune with what needs to be done. So we're looking forward to bringing this back to council and awarding a hauling contract and plan for May 7th. Any questions I can answer from council?
Questions, comments, anyone?
Couple of questions. Paint and other liquids, will that be accepted?
No, not, not acceptable. So as always, we do have attendants at the particular gate that tells them what's the popular method for disposal of paint, to the point, use it if you can and...
Norm, I understood that water-based paint that's all dried up in a can and there's no liquid is acceptable, so we need to figure that one out.
Right, if it is, that would be a solid waste because it is dried up.
Right. But people, they, they need to understand that it is a solid waste, even though it's a paint can.
And I've done...
Because that, that kept me for a long time for disposing mine because I didn't, I didn't understand that once it all solidified, that it was solid waste.
Right, so they do recommend you crack the lid on if there's a little bit left, if you just can't paint that last little bit and becomes a solid waste and we can accept it.
I ended up having a phone call today with a citizen that was concerned that they had some, some hazard, what they believed was hazardous waste that they needed to dispose of and they had talked about Dump Day and they had also talked about another community that is actually having hazardous waste disposal and we're not part of that. And I explained to that individual that no household should be generating hazardous waste. And that individual said, well, excuse me, I've, I've got some things. I said, well, let's talk about that for a minute. If you purchased something from a store, like a drain cleaner, okay, that, that is something that you don't want to put in the garbage, then what you should do is use it for the purpose you bought it for. Don't throw it away. Use it for that purpose. And when it comes to paint, you take your paint and once it is dried, it is no longer a hazardous waste. And how do you do that? If you've got a quarter of a gallon of paint left and you don't need it anymore because you're done painting, take it outside, pop the top and let it dry. And if you have a lot of it, pop the top and slosh it around on a piece of cardboard and then when it dries, throw some more on it. And all of a sudden, this liquid quote-unquote hazardous waste is no longer hazardous waste because it can be disposed of. So no home should be generating a hazardous waste. If you have used motor oil, there are vendors in our community that will take the used motor oil for free and take it off your hands. Same thing with antifreeze. So your home should not be generating a hazardous waste. Now, at Norm's house, he's got spent uranium rods, different story, I don't know what he does with those.
You know, to clarify a little bit, too, really the right industry term is, it's just special waste. You know, you just don't want to throw it in your household, house, trash. But yeah, there is special waste, which means you need to do a little more effort to dispose of it with special consideration. But to the point, yeah, the uranium rods that people say they have, yes, that's few and far between and I don't know how you end up with those.
What about computers, printers, things like that?
They're part of solid waste and be disposed of.
Trash?
Right. And, and it is important to point out, this is a Cleanup Day, what we, which is called your household garbage, the wet garbage, the protrusible garbage is the industry term, that's not allowed here because that's really what your hauler ought to be. So we, we try to keep the focus and that's why we've got the gate attendants to say, this is a Cleanup Day for cleanup, your yard waste or garage of those particular articles you see in the picture, not particularly the special waste or you just don't want to pay your garbage bill for a couple of months and save it up. I'll be honest with you, we've seen it and you can tell when they pull up there that they need to take it back home with them. So there is a lot of spotters, so to speak, to make sure we keep it within good boundaries of what can be disposed. Good comment.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Norm, good job.
We'll bring them next week for award. Thank you, Mayor.
Do it and thank, thank Marnie, too, for her help. Okay, we move on to number six. Discussion, Water Sewer Regulations Update. Neil, you're back up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, if you don't mind, actually, though, I would like to introduce you to somebody. We have the newest member of the Utilities Department. Randy Param has joined us starting March 1st. Has our utility engineer replacing Gary McConnell. And so Randy, if you'd like to come on up for a second and introduce yourself.
Welcome, Randy.
Thanks, Neil. Yeah, originally, I'm from Payson and was educated at NAU and in the last six and a half years, I've been consulting out of a firm in Mesa. And yeah, when we saw the opportunity to come and move to Prescott Valley and be a part of the team here, we jumped on it, my wife and I. And yeah, we're very excited to come be a part of the community, so.
Well, and we welcome you. Wow, we're, we're very impressed that you wanted to be here because that shows how intelligent you are.
Go ahead, deny it, no. Good job, Randy, appreciate that.
Well, since he's an engineer, we had already hoped he was intelligent, so.
Yeah.
All right.
An engineer would say that.
That's true.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true. All right. So this evening, I'm here to talk to you about town code and utility regulations and some updates that we need to make. And so basically, want to talk about wastewater in relation to our local limits, so we're going to talk about that for a little bit. Then we'll talk about the water, on the water distribution side, the backflow prevention. And then, you know, what you won't see, but what, one of the things that we're doing is we're updating these, these regulations and town codes. There was a lot of redundancy between the two, so when you actually get the documents two. So, when you actually get the documents here in another month or so, you'll see a lot of strikeouts in the utility regulations because about 90% of it was already covered in town code. So, we're going to try and clean it up, make them a little bit more cohesive and easier to understand. What I want to focus on tonight is the wastewater local limits and the backflow. Okay, now I don't know if we've talked about this before, but I want to talk about what local limits are. So, when we have an industrial discharger, and typically it only applies to the industrials, usually a regular standard commercial, it doesn't apply to them at all and obviously not to residential. So, you get industry coming into town. When they discharge anything into their sewer system, it has to meet certain standards. And we have limits on what they can discharge. And so, we set those limits. And those limits are to protect our systems. They protect the physical infrastructure, the sewer pipes, the manholes. It protects our wastewater treatment plant. It protects our workers. And also, it protects the environment because whatever they put in there has to be able to be removed or treated at the treatment plant so it doesn't harm the environment. So, it reduces them down low enough where it's not a problem or takes them out entirely. And we can't remove everything. There are certain things that we can't remove and certain things we remove 50% of, other things we can remove 90% of. So, we have to look at what we're discharging and work backwards to figure out what we can allow the industry to discharge to us. In our town code currently, we have local limits and you can see, these are those. So, you can see there's lots of metals and things like that, for the most part. Cyanide, arsenic, grease. So, that's what our local limits are and that's what we need to update. So, the reason that we did this study is because our existing limits, number one, they are about 20 years old or more. We don't know exactly where they came from, but in order to really be effective, they need to be technically based, which those we don't believe were. And they need to be specific to our community. So, we had not done a study previously. And so, we had Black and Beach do this work for us. And if you'll remember, in 2010, we had a very large wastewater spill. As part of the consent judgment under DEQ, one of the things that we agreed to do, even though it's not really related, was to update our local limits so that we actually had a study to base things on. And that study was actually completed in 2013. And we're now in the process of going ahead and implementing that into town code as the consent judgment required. Alright, so this slide shows you sort of how we do this study. We start actually at the very end of the treatment plant, what we're discharging. And we work backwards. So, we know what our limits are based on our permit. Our permit tells us for copper, you can discharge this much, this many milligrams per liter or parts per million. For zinc, it's this much. For oil and grease, it's this much. Based on sampling of what we're discharging from the plant and knowing how much of that same compound came into the front of the plant, we can calculate how much was removed or treated through the plant. So, we can take that treatment factor and go backwards and say, okay, so if this is what we can have at the end of the plant, here's what we can have at the front of the plant. Okay, so we just work backwards. Then we take the amount that we can have at the beginning of the plant. We subtract out what's known from our residential customers because we went out to our system and we actually sampled out there and said, here's what our residents are discharging. So, we then subtract that out and what's left over is what industry can discharge. And we do that for every single component on that list that you saw. So, for this study, the assumptions that we use, the plant capacity is 3.75 million gallons per day. Of that, the future total residential contribution is going to be 3.65 million gallons per day. So, that means basically industry is .1 million gallons per day. That may not sound like a lot. That's 100,000 gallons a day. Right now, with our industrial dischargers, we probably have on the order of 15, maybe 20,000 gallons per day. So, it's not a lot, but we needed to put some number in there to make room for if we have a future business that wants to come to town. We don't know who they're going to be and we don't know how much they're going to need to discharge. So, we need to have something available for them. So, that's where the 100,000 came from for industry. So, using EPA-accepted practices and, you know, doing sampling of what was in our system, we were able to do this study for us. This shows you a number of the sampling locations. So, if you're interested, I'm not going to get into any detail on this, but we sampled all around the town, areas that were primarily residential, some areas that were primarily commercial and industrial. And we collected all this data that Black and Beach was able to use to conduct the So, this is an example of how you would do it for copper. So, we start off with what our permit says we can discharge to the Agua Fria River. And those limits are based on what we're discharging to. So, the Agua Fria River and the aquatic life that's down there, ADQ says, okay, you can discharge .0077 milligrams per liter of copper in your effluent. Somewhere else where they're discharging down in the valley, they may have different numbers because they have different things that their limits are based on. So, with our treatment plant, our removal is about 89%. So, then we calculate backwards what our influent allowable number is, which is the .068, which is equivalent to about 2.13 pounds per day. That's what the PPD number is that you're seeing there. We subtract out the residential contribution, just like I said before, which is the 1.35. And now we've got .78 pounds per day that's available for industry. And if you divide that among the 100,000 gallons that we're allotting for industry, that gives us a number of about .9 milligrams per liter. And applying a safety factor of 10%, we come up with .8. So, that's sort of how the study is run through for every one of those components. Now, I'm going to do every single one of those and tell you exactly what the numbers are for those.
No.
Just kidding.
We'll invite you.
Okay, so I'm going to jump ahead now. So, I'm now going to show you what the existing limits are, along with what the study limits showed that they should be. Up there, you will see, in some cases, we didn't have any limits. And now we're saying, hey, we're going to go ahead and we're calling them reserved, which means we don't have a concern about those compounds right now. But if somebody comes in and there are a big discharger of barium or something, it gives us the ability to say, okay, you know, we're going to look at them on a case-by-case basis and we're going to look at yours in particular if you have a really, you know, something that you're discharging a lot of. So, we're just putting in it as reserved as opposed to putting in a specific limit. Some of them didn't change. The ones that did change are the ones highlighted in yellow. So, you can see that chromium, total chromium, we did not have a limit for. We now have one. It's 2.4 milligrams per liter or parts per million. Chromium 6 didn't change. Copper is going from 10 milligrams per liter to .8. So, you can see that's a reduction. Lead is going down a little bit from .5 to .2. Mercury is going down a lot, but nobody should be discharging mercury. I mean, that's pretty common sense. And so, out of all of these, probably the two ones that might be of most concern would be the copper going from 10 down to .8 and zinc going from 50 down to 1.5. One of the other things that we're proposing changing is our pH levels. Right now, we have a upper limit of nine for what they can discharge to our system. We're proposing to change it to 11. As I said up there, you can read it. There are really no negative impacts for that. We've seen other communities that actually don't have an upper limit on theirs. And it could have some beneficial or benefits to our system. And so, we think that changes give us a little bit more flexibility and it won't be, won't impact us at all. Okay, so discussion items, as I mentioned, copper is going down and so is zinc fairly significantly. But those numbers that we're looking at are what the study says based on what we can do in our treatment system, what our effluent limits are. Those are the numbers we've got to have to make the other assumptions that study work, the 100,000 gallons per day we're allotting to industrial. Okay, if we change that number, yeah, we could change what the limits are, but we, like I said, we need to allot something to them. So, and just so you're aware, so we have two dischargers right now that have, they're permitted dischargers. About 15,000 gallons per day is what they discharge combined. Both of those, or neither one of those has a problem meeting our proposed limits. And so, the only caveat I would point out is that, okay, so we might get a business in the future that may have trouble meeting some of those limits. What does that mean? That means that they, if they're going to discharge to our system, they would have to put in place a pre-treatment system on their own property that would remove whatever that compound is that they're having trouble with. So, for copper, for example, you know, we may not have Electroplating Industries or Circuit Board Manufacturer, you know, who could meet that number. So, they would have to put in a treatment system. But as I'm pointing out up there, there are, there's a thing called federal categorical limits that a lot of those dischargers have to meet certain federal limits anyways. The federal limits for copper are at 4.5 milligrams per liter right now, which is lower than our existing number of 10. So, they would have to meet the 4.5 at this point anyways. We are going lower than that with copper. We're going down to .8. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions on it. It looks like, Mary, it looks like you might have some questions.
I think engineers are very intelligent. Seriously, this is an amazing thing. And I mean, I'm totally confused, but I trust you thoroughly on all your numbers. That is all I have to say.
You didn't find the mistake that I made in there then?
Oh, you know what? It went right over my head. I was like, wow. It's amazing. That is amazing stuff.
Any other questions?
I do.
Rick?
You had mentioned that could be in the future, somebody would come into town that would exceed some of ours. They have to put a pre-treatment. I would assume that a business like that would be aware of the fact that they're exceeding limits anywhere in the country, basically, and would be expecting that kind of report from the town. I mean, that's not something we're going to spring on them as a result of this. They'd be coming here knowing that.
They would know to ask. Our limits may be different from other communities because, as I mentioned, it's, a lot of it is based on what you're discharging at the treatment plant.
Right.
And since we're discharging to the Agua Fria, it's based on actually aquatic life. And as an example, where I came from prior to here, 18 years ago, City of San Jose, the water pollution control plant there, they had very strict limits for copper and nickel. They were so strict and it was based on the South Bay aquatic life there, you could not take drinking water that people were drinking and dump it into the bay without being in violation of those limits because the health standards for humans is different than the health standards for the aquatic life in the bay. So, theoretically, you would have to drop that glass of water into the wastewater treatment plant and let it remove the nickel and the copper and so forth before you discharge it. So, it really all depends on where you're discharging and that's what our permit limits are based on.
Good. Laura?
Well, these changes require financial considerations for you and your equipment?
No. No. There's no, there's no financial impacts at all. We will continue to monitor and work with the two industrial dischargers that we have today. But as I mentioned, they are able to meet all of those limits right now, so there are no issues. It doesn't change anything from our perspective.
And I want to thank you for your department catching that issue from television in Phoenix about lead in our water and getting right on that to reassure our citizens because that was really poor reporting process down there.
That was confusing and Mark jumped right on that. And I was actually out of town and so I didn't even hear about it until I got back. But Mark jumped right on that and ran it to ground and took care of it.
I see him back there. So, thank you. Thank you. Because other people would have been confused as well. And I think the sooner we get in front of issues with facts, you know, the better off the whole community is. So, thank you, Mark.
Marty?
Yeah, I was just going to basically mention the same thing. I was riding in my car this morning and I hear on the radio that Prescott Valley came up with a bad water report and that we had too much lead. And I go, wait a second, you know, this is crazy. And then he continued to follow it up, saying that the report was based on a bunch of old houses that were built, you know, many years ago. And so, the lead production from those houses might have been, you know, skewing the numbers. So, I'm glad that you cleared it up and were taking care of it.
Yes. And just for, so everybody who's watching knows, the information that was cited in that ABC News report, you know, they were talking about Flint, Michigan and lead in the water. And then they referred to, hey, come look at this link. The link went to Department of Health Services to a table that showed communities in Arizona that, you know, were of lead concern. Well, the lead has nothing to do with water at all. It has to do with lead paint.
Yeah.
So, communities that have lead paint and you could be exposed to the lead in that paint. If you lived there, it was all based on lead paint. It was not based, it had nothing to do with water at all. So, hopefully, everybody out there watching will know that and know that they do not have a concern with lead in their water in Prescott Valley.
Good. Are there questions?
I had just one question. Just curious about the sulfuric acid. What's the source of that? Because we talked about the pH and I guess impacting the acidity of the wastewater.
The source of that is the microorganisms that are in the wastewater collection system. So, they're breaking down a lot of the organic material that's discharged. They're basically using it like food. Well, they have metabolic processes that lower the pH. It produces hydrogen sulfide gas. They're producing the gas. And the conditions in there, the anaerobic condition, there's basically not a lot of air in there. So, it's producing hydrogen sulfide gas, which combines with water moisture and creates sulfuric acid. And that sulfuric acid lowers the pH and then it starts to eat away at our concrete manholes. So, I don't know that we're really going to get that much benefit from it, but you know, what I was trying to say is it's not going to harm us. It's, you know, if we were going the other direction and lowering the pH, that would not be a good thing.
Thank you. I think it's interesting. I noticed you dropped boron and manganese from the current list to the new one and changed from chromium IV to chromium VI. Then you added beryllium and fluoride and thallium, which, whatever that means.
Yeah, there were a lot of things that we didn't have in our, in our town code that were things that we needed to have in there just based on what EPA looks at. So, they had to look at all of those.
Any other questions, comments?
Good job.
Good job. It's excellent. And of course, you always do a good job. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I get to talk about the water side of things. So, this was actually easier of the two, I think.
Go for the water side things.
Okay, so now I want to talk about our backflow regulations on our drinking water side. So, if I say backflow, what does that mean? Well, backflow is a change in direction of the water flow. Normally, we're pumping water out of the ground from our wells. It goes into the distribution system and then it goes out to the customers, whether that's residential, commercial, industrial. Backflow is when we've delivered that water past the meters and somehow that water changes directions after we have no control over it once it gets delivered and it comes back into our system. That's backflow. What we're trying to avoid is we're getting backflow of water that is not drinking water quality and potentially has been, come into contact with pollutants or been contaminated somehow and then come back into our system. Because then, once it gets back into our system, we could actually serve it to another customer, not even know it. Okay, so it's out of our control and we want to restrict that as much as possible. So, why is it a concern? Well, I think I just mentioned that. Gets, it comes into contact with pollutants or it can degrade in quality, become stagnant, and then get back into our system. Like I said, we don't, it doesn't meet drinking water quality anymore, but we could serve it to other customers. That's why it's a concern. Alright, so how does that happen? The two main ways are when we have a reduced pressure in our water system. Normally, our water system operates somewhere between 40 and 80 PSI or even higher than that in some cases. We can get localized low pressure if we have a water main break. We have a water main break, the pressure in that area, because water is exiting the pipe faster than we can replace it, it can drop down to 20 PSI or 10 PSI or even zero. The same thing can happen when the fire department is fighting a fire or flushing fire hydrants. We can get a localized reduced pressure. So, if the pressure in that area is now 10 PSI and the pressure of the water that we've just delivered to an industrial- just delivered to an industrial customer is 70 PSI, it's going to try and change directions if it can. Okay? So those are the two, the two main ways that we can get backflow into our system. So how do we normally present, prevent that from happening? Well, actually, let me, here's, here's a real good example that kind of illustrates. So if you look up at the top there, you see a hose coming off a spigot going into some kind of a chemical tank. So this could happen at a home. This could actually also be potentially in a mop sink in a restaurant. They have a, have a hose coming off a spigot. They drop it down into their little sink thing, and they're filling it up with water. The hose is going right into the water, or in this case, a chemical tank. If there is no backflow device, we get a break in the water main, it reduces the pressure, and just siphon that, just back the flow right out. It'll suck the stuff right out of that container if it's, if it's connected all the way through, bring it right back into our system. Okay? And then, like I say, we could deliver it to somebody else, and we don't know what All right. I'll get into how we prevent that in a second. But so the governing regulations on backflow is the Arizona Administrative Code, the International Plumbing Code, and then obviously, our town code as well. These codes set minimum standards. Okay? So they say at minimum, here's what you have to do for different types of businesses or industry. All right. So how do we prevent backflow? There are different ways. The best way is with an air gap, or that's the most definitive way, but you won't see that employed very often. Most other ways are mechanical. And so this is a valve, and what it's, what it's got is on the top part of the, the pipe, you'll see two check valves, those cylindrical looking things. So the water is coming in from the left, it pushes open the first check valve, and then it passes through. That check valve closes, they're usually, you know, spring loaded or, or something. It pushes open the second check valve, and then it goes on to the business. If a backflow does occur, those two valves will stop that water from going backwards. They have other devices that are not as good as this, that just have a single check in them, but the ones that we're going to be talking about tonight are primarily double checks or what we call reduced pressure type devices. So if we're just looking at the top here, that's a double check valve assembly. So it's got two valves in there, so it's redundant. If one of those valves fails, the other one's going to work. Okay? If both of them fail, then, then you're going to get a backflow. The bottom portion of this is what we call, it, it's a relief valve that you will see in a reduced pressure type device. And this one has the added benefit of if this first valve fails and you get water trying to go backwards, it'll actually port out the bottom of the device and discharge right onto the ground below it, instead of going back through the second check valve. Okay? So that's, that's kind of how these things work. There's, there, it gets more complicated than that, but that's just kind of in a nutshell. So this is an air gap. Real easy to, to understand. This is on the top of a water tank. When they connect them up to the fire hydrant, there's a, a pipe that goes up, takes it right up to the top, drops it into the tank. There is a gap between where that water is free falling from the pipe to the top of the tank. There's no, the, the pipe doesn't go down into the tank. So if that tank gets full, it's not sticking down in there, and nothing can ever come back into the system if we lose pressure. There's that air gap there. If it overflows, it's, it's not touching. Okay? So that's the most positive way of backflow. Not practical in, in many instances, but it is used on water trucks. These are three other devices. And so, so in order of how good they work, the air gap is at the top of the list. Second one down is the reduced pressure principal device, then pressure vacuum breaker, and then a double check valve assembly. And then, like I said, there are some single checks and things like that that are even farther below this that we're not even going to talk about because they're not even considered good for protection of water systems. So these are pictures of what you might see if you go out into the community. Sometimes they're outside. The one, the small one on the upper left, you might see, it might be a one-inch line serving an irrigation system. It might be the water line serving, you know, a small business. The bigger ones are, could be on a fire line for a fire sprinkler system or for, say, Walmart. They've got a, you know, three-inch line serving Walmart, so they're going to have a bigger device like one of those other two. Around town, you will see these, and typically, they are in some type of a covering or box that is supposed to keep them warm so that in the wintertime, they don't freeze. The older style ones, the green bag in the front, they tend to deteriorate. They get cracked and broken, whatever. So that's just an insulated bag, so you'll see those. You'll see these hot boxes, so these are like out in front of Safeway. Those are insulated boxes that don't tend to deteriorate. And that, the hot box is actually what our standard is for now of anybody installing them, and it has been for a number of years. That's what they have to install. We don't actually allow them to install the bags anymore because they do, they do, you know, fall apart. I'm just going to roll through a couple of examples here. This one actually kind of looks like a molded rock.
That's kind of cool.
This is the one out by the library.
I like that.
This is across the street at the ACEC school. Here's actually two of them right next to each other, one with the old style bag over it, and the other one with more, almost looks like a rock there. So as you drive around town, you'll see them. We don't allow these anymore either, but that's what it is. It's a, it's a covering for a, for a backflow device. Okay, so for at least the past 10 years, if not longer, we actually have been enforcing standards at a higher level than what is the minimum stated. Okay? I told you those, those standards were the minimum. We've actually been enforcing it a higher standard for better protection of our water system and for basically making it easier for us to administer, and so that when somebody changes, a business changes, they don't have, we don't have to worry about whether the device has to change as well. Okay? The old standard said if you're one type of business, you don't have to have it, or you have to have a double check, or you have to have the reduced pressure type. Now, all businesses, all commercial, has to have the highest level of protection, which is the reduced pressure device. And we've been enforcing that that way for at least 10 years. We did a survey when we first took over the Shamrock Water Company, and there were kind of gaps in the level of protection that we had, and we fixed that. So as I said, now all commercial industrial have the highest level of protection. Again, as an example, a, a shopping center is required to have a double check device under the minimum standards. If a dog grooming facility goes into that shopping center, they have to have a reduced pressure device, which is a higher level. Okay? So it, it makes things a little bit more complicated, and we're saying, no, everybody's got to have the reduced pressure device. Benefits are, we don't have to do surveys every once in a while to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, or if somebody's gone in and done a tenant improvement, that it was, you know, somebody figured out, hey, you need to upgrade your device or not. We don't have to worry about that. So we're not reviewing tenant improvements. And then all of the devices, well, the, the double check and the RP device, both have to have annual testing. The customer has to have those tested annually, send the results in to us. So we know that our system is protected and that those devices are maintained. This is an exam, or actually, this is the listing out of our existing town code that shows, so for all of these different categories, potentially, a different type of device might be required. And this is only one page of the list. This is the second page of the list. And I didn't print them real big because there's just a lot of, a lot of things. But what I did print real big for you is, these are the kinds of facilities that we do have in town. And so I'm showing you what the minimum standards are, and I'm also showing what we would like the town code changed to, the way that we've been enforcing it for 10 years or more. Basically, all commercial needs to have an RP device. Okay? Previously, there were some that could get away with a double, double check, but we, we want everybody to have the RP device. So if you can see the animal grooming facilities up here, those required an RP device before. A hospital or mortuary had to have an RP device. A car wash, sand and gravel plants, irrigation systems, shopping centers, double check. And I gave you that example about like a dog grooming business moving into a shopping center, they're required to have an RP, not just a double check. So this is what it looks like and, and what we want it to look like, make it a lot simpler for people to understand and to enforce. I'm going to take a break for a second because that was a lot of information. So actually, if you have any questions about that part of it, I, I'd be happy to answer those. I'm going to get in a little bit now, talking about backflow on fire sprinkler systems, so it, it gets a little bit different.
I had a question. So the businesses that don't have the RP, and you're saying that they're going to need to get the RP, or did I misunderstand you there?
All businesses in Prescott Valley right now should have the RP device. We have, like I said, we've been enforcing it for 10 years that way.
Okay.
10 years or more ago, they were required to put those in. And so the existing businesses should be up to snuff. Any new businesses coming in, they'll just put in a device when they build their building.
Okay.
And whether it's the RP or the minimum, which is kind of the double check, you know, you're still, the, the cost is very similar on those two items, they're not, not a lot different in cost, but the level of protection is a lot greater for us. So should I continue into the fire system side of things? Okay.
Keep on flowing.
All right. So on fire systems, we also require backflow devices. So this is a fire riser. So below, below this thing, down at the bottom, there may be a, a device down there, or there may be a device outside, which is the actual backflow device that we require to protect our system before they get into this valving and piping that is actually the fire sprinkler system and its controls. Now, the way that these are administered are a little bit more complicated and vary quite a bit from community to community. I did my best to try to summarize what the minimum standards are. The class one, one through six are all system, fire systems that have water in them. So they have systems that have water in them, then they have systems that don't have water in them, like a dry system. And there are six classes of fire systems that have water in them. Class one and two typically have a direct connection to our water main and may or may not, or won't be connected to anything else. It's just a direct connection. They may have a fire department connection for a, for a, you know, like a fire truck, but typically, they're not connected to anything else. And so those, if they are using potable water piping in the fire sprinkler system, and typically, that would be a plastic like CPVC, which is what you might find in residential, we're recommending that we essentially stick with no additional backflow required on that, which is pretty common around the country. Over the last number of years, we've actually required double check valves in residential. We've done that over in Stoneridge, where they've got all those townhomes real close together with the, the villas. We have been talking to the local design, uh, fire sprinkler designers and installers, and we've been talking to them about our, how we enforce this and what makes sense and what doesn't. And so based on discussions with them, we are recommending that we basically do what everybody else has been doing on those, which is not requiring the residential to have additional backflow protection. Because when the water gets into their system, it won't deteriorate anymore with the plastic so much as you would in a commercial system where you've got black steel. The black steel can corrode, you can leach materials out of that into it. And so on that, we are going to require a minimum of a double check and also the RP if it's, if it's something that's got chemical in it, like antifreeze. So the class one and class two example up there is typically considered to be residential. We're saying, okay, no additional backflow. They will have a single check like they design into a normal fire sprinkler system. The class one and two using non-potable piping, which is the black steel I just mentioned, we're saying that's got to be a double check valve, and that's a testable device. They will test it annually, make sure it's working. The class three, four, five, and six, essentially, it's a fire system where they're starting to add pumps, or they add their own tank for storage, or things like that, where we don't even know where that, what that water is, how long it's been there. All of those need to have the RP device. And then anything with chemical in it, such as antifreeze, because when you're building a, like for Home Depot out here, they may have an overhang over their front walkway area, and they may store materials out there. So if they have an overhang that's more than four feet wide, and it's made of combustible materials, the fire department will require them to put sprinklers up there in those overhangs. I don't know if you've ever seen those on some of the commercials. You look up and you go, why is there a fire sprinkler outside? It's combustible material, it's a requirement. When they do that, those fire sprinklers have to have antifreeze inside them to keep them from freezing, and we don't want that coming back into our system. Those have to be protected with the RP device. And then the dry pipe systems, typically, those don't have any water in them at all. And we did have discussions with the sprinkler guys, and they were saying, why would you require us to have an RPZ, whereas in most cases, if you'll see up there, the normal minimum standard is no additional protection. Our answer on this one is that those dry systems, they have an air compressor that's compressing and, and keeping air in that dry pipe, and it's keeping the valve closed, so there is no, no water in there to deteriorate, but they're pressurizing it. And backflow, you look in the International Plumbing Code, says that we need to protect our system from pressurized systems containing liquids, gases, saw, anything solid. So it's a pressurized system. We're taking the stance that we need to have an RP on that as well. So that's what we're looking at. One of the other issues that we've come across is that with these devices, because of freezing issues, the, a lot of times, the building owners, the fire sprinkler guys, like to put them inside the fire riser room. Per our code, and, you know, with, with the domestic system, all of those are at the water meter. On the fire sprinkler side, they have been, been allowed to go into the fire riser room, but now we've got a length of pipe between the property line and the fire riser room that potentially is unprotected. We could get that backflowing. So we, we've compromised with them and come up with a number of 150 feet. So if their fire riser room is closer than 150 feet to the property line, it can go in the fire riser room because we're not, we don't then have that much exposure in that pipe. If it's more than that, then it, it basically needs to go out at, at the property line. So here's a picture. The lower, the lower one is incoming water for the fire sprinkler system. You'll see right above that, the, the brass looking valve there. That is an RP device, and the reason that's there is because there's a smaller line coming off the main one. The big one goes into the main part of the building, serving water. The small one is probably going outside to an overhang. So it's a smaller line, maybe a couple of heads, that's got the antifreeze in it. So they've got the RP device on there to prevent that antifreeze from coming back into the system. All right. So what is the issue with the fire riser room versus the property line? There are a couple of pros and cons. In the fire riser room, obviously, they don't need to provide any additional heat source or no additional electrical to keep, to keep the device warm. In the hot box, we do have to run electrical out to that. They have to put a little heater in there to keep it warm, but it, so we require the box, we require the heat. The other item comes into play with an RP device. I showed you very, back at the very beginning, that a double check valve will, you know, there's two valves there, and then if it manages to get past those, it'll go, come back into our system. With the RP device, it flushes out the bottom. In a catastrophic failure, that device, it's a full port discharge. So if you have a two-inch water line, it's a full port, two-inch discharge coming into that room, which means that they might have to have a four-inch, a six-inch, or an eight-inch drain line coming out of that room. So we tell them it's better for them if they just stick it outside in the, in the hot box out at the property line, because then you don't have to worry about your room getting inundated with water and damaging anything. And we've also had some issues with coordination between getting that drain put in, because usually, fire sprinkler designs come in when the building is about three quarters done. We tell them they've got to have, if it's going to be an RP device, because they're going to have antifreeze, that they need to have this drain, but more times than not, it becomes an issue with the contractor who's building it. It didn't get caught in the plans, and we're fighting it. So that, that does become an issue, but if they put it out in the hot box, it, it's not a problem. I was going to show you a, a video of the full port discharge, but it's not working in here, so. All right. So this is kind of a summary. Residential fire system, we won't require additional backflow unless there's unusual circumstances like antifreeze. Connection will be made on the customer side of the water meter, which also has a check valve incorporated into it. And the piping shall be potable water piping. into it. And the piping shall be potable water piping that meets National Sanitation Foundation Standard 61. For residential, you won't see those unless the house is larger than 5,000 square feet, or unless they're converting it for use as a care facility. So, okay, talking now about the domestic water service. All commercial users will have an RRP device installed at the water meter box in a hot box. It's not applicable to single-family residences used solely for residential purposes. Fire sprinkler services, again, with the residential, if they're using potable water piping, under no unusual circumstances, they shouldn't need any kind of additional device. With the commercial systems, Class 1 and 2 do require a double-check valve, and that's with the non-potable piping. And Classes 3 through 6 do require an RP. And I think I'm done.
I guess you're having--
I hope I'm done.
You're going to give everybody a test next week, is that right?
No, because I probably wouldn't pass it either.
Question, Mike?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious again about the antifreeze and how that works. Does that mix with the water? So, you're actually, when that's dispersed, when it's triggered, it's dropping water and antifreeze?
That's correct. And if it's dropping it, I'm, you're probably glad it's dropping it, because you've probably got a fire going on. But--
Right.
And there are two kinds of antifreeze. There is the normal chemical type, and then there's also a food-grade antifreeze. And we've had discussions about that with the fire sprinkler design guys. Unfortunately, at this point in time, once the system is built, we don't have any control over whether they then take the food-grade stuff out of there and replace it with something different. We don't know what it is. We can't take that chance. So, that's been an issue that we've talked about as well.
Good. Other questions? Laura?
Can you handle a little humor?
Sure, I'd love some.
Now, I understand why engineers are so different.
Different so good.
Yeah, this is so complex, but I want you to know, you did a good job, to the point where I actually understood most of it.
Well, thank you.
Give Laura a test next week. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anything else, Neil?
Just to let you know, so, in about a month, on the 14th of April, we'll be coming back to you with the actual changes to the town code and the ordinance, based on what we just discussed. There has to be a first reading and a second reading, so we'll be at both meetings in April. If you guys would like me to come back at the work-study prior to the April 14th meeting and do this again, I can--
For both the first and second reading, the same presentation, yeah.
And the work-study even prior to that. So, I can come back three more times if you want.
That sounds a lot like a threat.
You can come back, but I think, I don't think we, when a second re--
I understand.
Any other questions? Larry?
I'll borrow on him in case he goes too long.
Okay. Any other question? Laura?
I'm adjourned.
If there's no other questions--
I have none.
No other comments, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks all for coming.